Public, I will now call this October 12th, 2021 regular business meeting to order.
Okay.
We will begin tonight by acknowledging that buildings within Minneapolis Public Schools are located within the traditional homelands of the Dakota people.
Yeh wun de na ku yeh pi yeh tha so ha ti yeh pe luh Minneapolis na nyotro ho Dakota cap, uh actually. Ho ah wa la hu eh ti MPS na yin yotso, yotineng wu nyotro ho luh shi lu jao no. Te yeh la wa ho luh yeh jok he te ni zi la me per sing ko po so. Ha ti nyotro ho luh shi lu jao no ni rong li cha to li cha, te nyotro ho la lu va lu che, wo chau. As a reminder for anyone speaking tonight including during public comment. Please speak directly, clearly, and loudly into your microphone. Chao ke ne hai lu ke yeh ro, te hai ping to lu microphone eh shu re kiri no. Hmm, shi sing cho cho wa hai. Shi te ne sai lu la yeh ha ti yeh yeh shu re. Eh yeh to hai lu kan ro eh ne kiri no. Eh ta ka to ke hai lu ta le lo na chi to, ta ka mo lu microphone cho to, koe poli, ka ho ka ro. Nyotro lu sheh no la ta ta ho ka ro ha ti cho bo ro director tu 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 tu. Te nyotro da ka na ne po i cho chi nyotro ho bo room. Cho chi na shi ti yeh ko i lu ferro sovereign sa bo nyotro ho geography nyotro ho sang Minnesota. Chi yeh pe lu uh lu ho luh uh, uh yeh la mu yeh yeh la te te chi, kana yeh i ko ka wa yeh la. Ha ti ro pe cho dun sa kan da wa nyotro ho luh district. Nyotro na cha po eh ti shi tha nyotro te ki no. Hmm, ne po no ha ti rong go li ne, pe pe te uh, po ku yeh ku uh ro pe nyoh. Hmm, te nyotro apelu vi ta lo no la mu i ko ceremony, wo to cha cho chi cho no. Hmm, te xi pe mu i ko video, wa sa mo cho cho shu re to shai, sa ke director Jordan, ah la mu tha mi chi mi chi cho. Kana yeh i ne video wa la cho, cho ne shu re to shai, wa la hu eh the eleven nation.
When I'm in a room and I see native nations and native flags representing, I feel proud. I feel proud of who I am. I feel proud to be native. I feel proud to be Ojibwe Anishinaabe. Proud of the people and of the, of the district or the company or the organization that is, that is lifting that up and honoring that and making sure that native representation matters.
I feel seen. Um, I feel, I felt heard um by administrative, administration and staff across the district.
Many people tried to take our culture away from us and trying to take it back and show the native culture and people what it is.
It's important for our students to see themselves.
Nyotro lu sheh no ne ta ta shai i ko video nyotro ho Minneapolis. Wa cho ke cho ha ha yeh cho wa pe lu Minneapolis na nyoh. Ye nyotro da la ah da ko ta, eh ni mu tan ha yeh ko i pap uh wa nyotro na ko che no.
Many of our students come from the eleven nations that we installed today. Many of our students do not. We have more than fifty-five tribal nations represented from our students across the district.
What's happening here today is a great first step in recognizing the unique cultural gifts that every American Indian student and their families and all tribal nations in Minnesota bring to the Minneapolis Public School District.
It's important because we want to be represented. We want to be heard. We want to make sure that we are seen, that we are represented as, as a people. For far too long, we have not been represented. We have not been heard. We have a strong voice and we want, we want people to listen to that voice.
We are taking an intentional step in recognizing the sovereign status of the eleven tribal nations that we.
Chi ko la tha no ma yeh tha so, ko ha ti yeh nyotro ho ta chan Minneapolis no ma la mu ko i pap uh, uh nyotro tha che no eh, kana yeh i ko ke wa uke yeh jo ka cho cho, uh da cho tineng uh i tsu la nyotro ko che no.
Wow, that was beautiful. Uh Director Jordan.
Wo chau ka da ka yeh i ko rong heng, cho to uh director Jordan. Uh cho to Chair Ellison. Hmm, cho to ka apa tuni ni ku yeh tu school board director, ti yeh iling niya ni chi nyotro ho luh district no. Um nyotro lu sheh da xi na yeh ro du du po ta tu chi ti o, nyotro shi si no. Hmm, te nyotro da ko tribal nation. Te ha ti ni yeh ping bo li cha, yeh la mu to ka no. Ya li eh ti nyotro MPS yeh dun sa kan da mu tan ha chi cho chi ko tribe nyotro ho, te xi ma ko i ko. Te ki ke uh cho lu la yeh la hai ning, yeh cho to Chair Ellison. Ha ti te duan eh chi no yeh i ko ching ching to ke nyotro. Hmm, ka ke cho shu re po ha ti kana yin yeh pe te va te chi i tsu yin mu te nyotro chi xi. Te yung sa fa sheng, te ke cho ya tha ho lo la te da chi chi xi, te yeh o li cha yeh si ko cho lu ne yeh ta te. Eh shu te, cho cho da tu chi ku sa fa sheng cho cho ne chi shu re cho luh district. Ha ti nyotro ho ka Indian Department wa yeh la ke cho ke cho to hai ning. Ti Chair Ellison, ti cho uh cha po tu len so tu, wa ta lo mu chi te ki rong li no, wo ke yeh jo ka cho pe cho ni cha chi shu re. Te wo chau to Chair Ellison, cho da ka mo to Chair Ellison.
Thank you Chair Ellison, I'll just quickly echo Director Jordan's comments in saying thank you to everyone who made this possible, from those who've been advocating for data representation and visibility for generations.
Te wo chau cho ne tu len so tu uh la mu ku nyotro ka no, nyotro ho Minneapolis Public School. Da to uh cha Indian Education Director Simon ti yeh ni pap uh ti Amanda Dion. Um nyotro lu sheh wa ku nyotro da no, kana yeh i ko wa shing ching to pe. Hmm, te kana yeh i ko reminder to tu len so tu, uh cha tu len so tu yeh ka, ti Minneapolis Public School. Uh wo chau to uh ka kana yeh i ko wa ta lo tu len so tu. Director Anderson, uh ka mo ka motion she. Ke li da pe ka agenda pass, eh, yeh uline po molink ti yeh youa sanha hello, te chi mo la ti tu len so tu pa rong se ai. Cho chi pa rong se ne, ya li na pe ba, ba, te Director Paulie bo ka wa sa schedule, chao la cho. Te ya li na cha lu cho le, jo le ko plow pe ka ki shi tha da la mu to pa rong, eh cho pa rong se ai, cho chi pa rong se ne. Te ya li da jo li da un ti ko plow ka ki shi tha uh approve le. Hmm, ta te no, chi pe yeh la mu shi tha so ka public comment. Ye ta pe la mu shi tha ya li no link tu ho chi ta sa, cho sa lu to la mu benshi sa to, cho cho lu to ko luh ke shua. Ko ti yi chi pe yeh to la mu nong to cho yo lu uh cho sa to to ho ka ke shua wa te cho.
Nyajong kulu pe huwa lia harp, ku mu itu mi nyok kan da nyotro da no high school, ti itu nyotro da awa ten middle school. Ku sa pa oh ha ti yeh nyato shiono ta lo ilusion la, MPS tu ta lo la bo ta Minneapolis, ta lo mu to ilusion no. Wo li ne la uh la mu ta hi sa to ka peace and order, nyotro ho che kan da, yeh principal ne la wo li cha to li cha.
Te wo li ne po mu te de da tu, wa yeh la ti ta to pe che kan da, ha ti yeh safety ne rong li cha to li cha. Ku no ha ti yeh, hmm ta mu to pe lu che kan da, la yeh lu lu che kan da. Hmm, eh wo chau.
Hello, my name is.
Um nyajong kulu pe yeh era yeh ilang niya kan da nyotro MPS, ku hu tuwa ta no saa tshe shi to cha po uh, uh ka yeh ta long to ka mandatory. Nyotro ho pe cha che kan da uh ko ve case, uh nyotro lu sheh no ku shi pa oh, so ha ti wo li ne lu district nyotro ho da no, uh quarantine da ko plow. Hmm, te kana no yeh i ko ka wa nyotro na lu district wa yeh la ke te dun sa kan da, we had ya la yeh chi to to ho che kan da, ti la yeh kan da chi to. Wo te lia ti nyotro lu sheh te mu itu tineng ni mu tu mo eh shu re to ha ju cho cho eh yeh ta lo mu uh mu si an cho ta le, la yeh chu to cho chai to le ta ka to kan da. Ya ha ti la yeh chi test, uh ya ha ti kana yeh i ko positive, hmm te yeh chu to ko ko wa tseng la yeh ka chai, ha ti wo li ne kana ni yeh rong li cha to li cha. Hmm, cho.
Gary Marvin Davis in New Salem Educational Initiative, just a few blocks.
Initial, nyoto da David, blog, uh, ko te Minneapolis, ta lo mu si cho dun sa kan da, wa la ta nyotro yeh du nu, te yo lu, wo ta mu tha, nyoto, nyotro ho ka, uh blog spa da kam. Nyotro da kana yeh ku wa ho luh nyotro nu sanday lu go li du un ti pe, la mu tha so, eh sa to kam po ke tu to, wa chai, uh te hing jom heng la mu blong, nyotro yeh du sa no. Tseng hai za ha ki chi chi shi nyotro ho Minneapolis Public School. Te yeh ko li du un ti xa le, te uh chi chi tu tineng wo to. Te yeh cho tineng wa nyotro Russian la mu to shua te, eh nyotro te cha mali kan no, ku sa po, uh ku cho ke sa da no. Te yeh chu to mu ha che, nyotro da ka local level, ma te li ma che nyotro da ka. Uh kiya ha ti wo li ne cha che kan da, wa wa rong ke chi rong, nyeh ra chi ra chi. Wa wo to Minneapolis Public School wa ni chi wa ni lu lu ho luh.
Hello, my name is Anna Smith Snyder.
Ku yeh iling nyotro la mi chi school, nyotro ho Minneapolis Public School, ku tu tu mu kan da, yeh fai de ta ka la ca lu go li du di i. Da to ni ko len, vi ha ti la ta nyaxi ze, wa ta mu to kamoku kuwa. Ki ya li na ni ta ka mu kan da chi ta lo ca lu go li du di ko chi, nyotro pe lu district eh ti yeh yeh chu la nyache ko chi nu. Pe cha itu mi nyok ka ko tu mi nyok mo test eh xi ni ne ne ke ti, chi nu ta ka. Ne pe mu to pisar ne ke ne ke ti, te xi za ni ta lo li da, ne ke ti la, chi mo re chi. Te xi ma ne ching ta ka mu chi ta kan da, ni yeh ta nyache ilu vi, Minnesota Department of Health, ha, ha ti yeh. Ya uh ko, cha cha ko plow nu, ya ha ti mu kan ya mu nyotro ho. Ya ha ti yeh uh ko nu, andai ni chi mu wa tu kamon nyotro ho ni. Ku tu mi nyok ni tu to ho uh, ho quarantine rong li no, te xi ma ku ni la yeh chi chi ku ni ta ka mu kan da. Ku ma ku lu sheh ha ti yeh ku tu ti ti ku uh wa ho luh ho che, ti ya li da ni chi nu, te xi je jong tu cho nyeh cha chi la yeh cha mi nyok. La mu chi to, la wa ho luh ti cha mi nyok yeh la nyache chi to nde nde li da. Te ya li da ni chi ku sa ka uh Minneapolis yeh chu to ta ka la mu uh ko cho chai, ni yeh chi nyanteng to pe cha mi nyok wa ni tu pa pong ka, nde nde la eh ha chi li mo che. CDC tu ha ti yeh wa ta li no la yeh chi chi uo ti, wo chau cho ne cho ke blong.
Hi, my name is.
Nyajong kulu pe huwa Samara Free Mark, ku yeh iling niya to tu mi nyok wa kan da nyotro ho. Ku tu nu no yeh to tha so ku ha ke tseng hai za to ka ko ve ka quarantine. Uh Minneapolis ta chi ta ka testing programs, yeh ku sha nyotro na tu governor, uh po la ha ti ne jo wa shai ka ri video no. So so tu tineng hai ka speech nyotro kana, eh i uh, cho cha mi nyok ta ka to kan da. Um go ha pi ye ka cha mi nyok to kan da ka jong li jong to, la yeh chi chi nyeh yeh mu nyache eh shai TV. Hmm, te speaker yeh hai ta ma meng. Ha ti yeh yeh chu mu cho testing programs eh ka cha mi nyok te li, chi pong la yeh ha ti bla mu to ta wa to che.
At my child's school and in schools across Minneapolis, there is no testing protocol.
Te nyotro ho cha kan da no, ti la yeh chi mu ho uh, uh testing to da chi ni. Chi molink ti la yeh la mu ke so ha ti wo li ne yeh sen yeh mu ru li cha, eh te mi nyok na te li ta ta ka to kan da. Hmm, so chai no yeh i tsu chai wa rong go li chi chi nyok, ti mu wa to cha du nu la. Te pe cho nyeh cha chi, uh ki chi to ha ti yeh vilikcha, ni ti rong li da no, cho ni chi. Te kana yeh i ko ka wa ni chi rong to pe cho dun sa kan da, nyotro pe lu district no, wo chau to cho uh ni chong blong shu re.
Dear Minneapolis Public School Board, this is Jessica Garrett.
Wo chau to cha ni cha school board shu re ku yeh Jessica. Mu itu mi nyok kan da nyotro ho sixth grade, the district te li tu kamoku kuwa, jong da yan da lu ju nyotro ho niya pu, public school nyotro ho lu si ri yeh lu ste no. Minneapolis Public School ya ni ke ti. Yeh ta lo mu shai, to lu za ho ke. Wa ta pe la mu to lu ri ti o o la yeh nyotro ho luh che kan da. Da to uh community member, wa pe yeh chu to la ka nyotro lu sheh da xi na shai ri shai da. La yeh ha ti ta na sho ne ke yeh ta mu na sho no rong, so so nu la yeh ha ti nu wo che chi rong ma te li. Kana chi yeh i ko safety si.
Hi, my name is Nicole.
Nyajong kulu pe huwa Nicole, ku dun sa kan da ke na ga da nyotro Minneapolis Public School. Ku sa tha mi chi cho ha ti, hai za to ka shortened quarantine, ku tu mi nyok yeh ka tha kan da ka ko plow nu quarantine. Ye yeh i ko nyoh heng, uh cho ne fe, te i jo, ke kan da kan da. Ni wa ho wa to chai la yeh yeh nyoh to no. Te ni ta nyotro che. Te pe yeh to to, ha ti cho chai ti yeh yeh cho chai ti xi ku kuwa che kan da nyotro chi ilu sing cha che kan da, te xi ma la uh ka quarantine da. Na yeh chi nu lo tu. Te kana ma yeh i ko rong go li nyoh nyoh to uh yeh 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 chi, wo chi mu ka quarantine nyotro ta chai la. Te ya li da no la ma sa ka ne la mu shorun chi shi ha no, eh kana sheh ne po yeh i ko yeh rong to pe shu re, wo chau.
Hi, my name is Kulia Pringle, Midwest Regional Organizer.
Nyajong to uh tu len so tu ku yeh, kulu pe huwa Kulia, kana nyotro ho Midwest Regional Organization ku wa ho luh da to, ta jong tu dun sa kan da, ti yeh ti yeh si du. Kana rong go li yeh i ko ke wa ku yeh to tha so ku cho ke sa le cho ke po, nyotro ho che kan da wo chi mu. Hmm, sa ke che kan da yeh chu to mu tu tseng tseng cho cho ke jok he kan da, ne na, wa yeh to mu te ni yeh cho la mu pa to cho dun sa kan da, uh ke cho to pe. Te la mu long ka benchmark requirement.
Hello, my name is Louise. I am a parent to two Minneapolis Public School kiddos.
Hmm, te nyajong kulu pe yeh Louise ku mu, atum nyok kan da nyotro ho Minneapolis Public School. Ti yeh wo chau to person pu ne te ne, grab da to uh si ri ri. Ta to uh ha si ri ri la mu te pe cha hon chi mu tseng, uh i to ajo ho da ilu ha ti. Nyotro a ti en go, en go on, ku yeh mi nyok mu kan da nyotro da che kan da inu to inu. Hmm, te xi ma ku pa dun ta lu district ku ne fa, bi hai li yeh pong ka, wo chau to superintender wa ne ta wa kana. Uh wa ne da eh, te ku ku chi pa rong to ka C D D.
And we have been nothing short of thrilled with the transition and being part of our community at the school level versus driving to a school outside of the community. Thank you for your time.
Wo chau to ne lu sheh.
Um, you're listening and considering my comments.
Hmm, cho to ne ka wa cheng ti la blong ku.
Hi, my name is Sarah Koshinska and I am a parent of a middle schooler at Stanford Middle School with Minneapolis Public Schools.
Nyajong kulu pe huwa Sara Keshka yeh tu ni chi ti yeh itu middle school nyotro ho che kan da Minneapolis. Uh ku wo chau to da ilusion ta lo no wa se pu ne te ne, ti to wa ho luh, uh chi sa po ka te ke long, nyata pe cho chai cho, yeh ro lu sheh, we had ya ta xi na chi sa ka long, te ti ti to no. Wo chau.
Hello, my name is Kristoffing.
Nyah atum nyok kan da nyotro Edison High School. Wa ku ha lu ku sa hai uh ta apelu, a ti kan da nyotro Edison. Kana yeh i ko ka wa rong go li chi mu ka chi mu chi, hai chi so ha ti wo li ne yeh la mu ko cho ti ta ro te mi nyok. Hmm, we had ya ta xi na chi pe le mu shak dang le. Ka ti atum mu uh ko pe, mi nyok tu mu kan da ta ko pe lu shu nyotro ho che kan da no. Uh nyotro da uh cho cho lu li da lo no, uh bo ling cho cho to kamoku ve kuwa go si. Te nyotro ho, te nyotro ho superintender, te da dao ka ke wa ci ci shi wa ni yeh tau ci ci shi. Hmm, te ku sa ka ka sha ka chi shai zi, wo li ko wa to, uh renew superintendent co contract to. We had ya kana yeh i ko ching ching wa pe tong kan nyotro lu sheh da xi no. Te li da ni chi yeh sa ka wa uo kana to. Hmm, te ta te no pe yeh no cho wa yeh la mu tang lu, nyotro ho no ma no. Hmm, te pe tu speaker yeh la to da lu podium, ku sa ke ne blong cha lu li da ka no, ni ka ke hai lu yeh chu cha cha li ona ti. Uh chi so hai sa itu tineng tu nyotro uh cha staff la yeh cha, ti so hai cha lu pe nyotro ho che kan da, te yo lu, wo yeh tha la mu. Hmm, te ku yeh to lu microphone eh yeh chu bu ka tha du la, ka ke, ku sa tha ro ka ha ti kana pe to yeh lu shi lu jao la lu community yeh tau tu mu shi tha.
Nyajong wo chau. Kulu pe yeh Carolyn Hood ku yeh etu ni chi nyotro da MPS, so to mi nyok nyera hon ke na ga re te hon i, ku etu la mu shorun da ra cho ni mu chi, wo yeh 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 ni chi la mu ko, luhu pei to no, te etu uh social worker, la mu mu, ka ke, uh cha cha mi nyok, uh ka ke, uh sa la mu pei jong ku yeh mu niya lu. Lu district no, te lu jao no, ku yeh to hai ka pe la to lo mu cho ka, lu shi ha eh mu, mu cho ne, cho le nyole i ne, uh so, ko plow nu la mu to xanu si. Uh yeh to cha ne la shi ka ke la mu kuwa, kala pei mu cho mi nyok to kan da yeh ting che ting mu. Se pu ne chen re to, re to hai ke da ku da ko plow nu yeh ka, uh mu ke yeh yeh sing chop la yeh cho la jom no ka, tu kamon da, tu xi ma. 读，come on，的，都，西，嘛，可能，去，嘿，靠，用，我，我，给， 啊，去，用，了，么，着，叫，米尼尔， 那，着，叫，你，子，鸟儿，Roseville St. Paul, in St. Louis Park, Edin Prairie. 去，从，着，叫，米尼尔，了，么，鸟， 他，子，也，还得，我，海，路，上，去，推 鸟儿， 鼓，我，佩，我，Sheriff Persigal，我，呀，你，你，子，摸，着，他，米尼尔，跟， 啊，你，我，个，天，the South High School， 我，也，一，叫，你，子，他，都，说，给，着，叫，米尼尔，呢，还，个，天，都，the South，他，叫，你，子，了， 也，了，叫，人，也，来，去，我，我， 但是，嘛，可能，你，我，诶， 他，我，呢，呢，到， 他，都，着，这个，跟，到，你，去，我，给，你，先，着，了， 也，摸，给，啊， 来，么，海，车，我，我，给，了，看，到，他，我， 你，这个，呢，South High，你，去，鸟，也，到，我，用，车，呢，我，唱
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Cisneros.
啊，鸟儿，鼓，我，佩，我，Maria Cisneros， 我，呀，你，都，他，叫，了，着，着，叫，National Syndicate of Parents， 东，吧， much of our program, no， 他，我，配，叫，米尼尔， 他，了，鸟，去，从，着，了，啊， 了，么，给， 你，他，是，呢，了， 诶，个，我，配，叫，米尼尔， 路，district，呢，你，都，捏，到，到， 可，了，他，里，拧，着，了，亏， 了，么，贴，我，配，叫，米尼尔，了，么，拧，到， 他，了，么，发，着， 他，鼓，路，谁，着， 了，么，弄，了，伊，甲，贴， 鸟儿，John John Do, board member, head superintendent graph,鼓，我，佩，我，Tony John，我，呀，你，你， 他，我，per organization，我，叫，B，了，么，还得，叫，你，子，呢，啊，嘛，呢， 我，给，你，鸟，了，么，着，了，了，么，西，哈， 为啥，我，可能，了，苏，海，我，对，苏，他，呢，我，叫，撒，个，叫，Minneapolis School Board，呢， 啊，有，呢，我，给，拧，到， 我，给，我，有，到，了，我，个， 我，我，贴，都，叫，你，子，可，了，了，么，晒，水，我，还得，可，啦，啦，他，嘛，了，摸，给，la pisao， 也，我，我，我，他，里，了，么，晒，晒，内，我，我，有，摸，我，给，la pisao，也，我，有，同，感，你，我，给， 了，么，我，他，叫，他，是，呢，我，唱 Nikima Levy Armstrong 鸟儿，John John Do，我，Nikima Levy Armstrong， 鼓，你，跳，着，civil rights，他，都，activates， 他，我，civil justice network，你，你，都，呢，我，我，后来，呢，我，Sheriff Persigal，呢，你，住，呢，我，配，我，education committee，了，么，还，他，给，测，生， 啊，了，着，呢，我，给， 呃，载，到，叫，米尼尔，他，叫，叫，给，他，呃，他，明，都，呢，叫，他，叫，你，住，到，South High School，我，都，你，捏，叫， 海，个，你，错，乱，错，图， 他，路，这个，呢， 海，South High School，到，他，了，么，弄，叫，你，子，就，给，测，生，了，他，叫，米尼尔，来，嘿，你，啊，能，住， 你，能，卡，你，能，来，嗯， 自，去，我，找，这，了，这里，摸，了，我，佩，超，到，的，South High School，了，我， 去，报，的，有， 摸，come on，你，通，的，推，你，我，给，多， George Floyd，多， 所以，他，可能，也，依靠，我，就，到，摸， 你，了，么，晒，我，个，晒，里，晒，到，但，用， 诶，我，还，个，你，去，从，载，了，我，给，啊，冉，里，诶，晒，有，我，个，叫，他，叫，你，住，到，South High School，呢，有，摸，我，给，la pisao，了，么，着， 他，了，后，了，么，还，他，叫，你，了，真，的，我，我，给，我，读，come on，你，通，的，推，呢， 用，这， 了，了，么，还，send，到， 诶，我，叫，啊，到，了，叫，给，带，呢，去， 中，波，里，好，鸟儿，到，那么，呢，波，里，呢， Elijah Norris Holiday 鸟儿，我，我，佩，我，Elijah Norris Holiday，鸟儿，我，做，superintendent graph，叫，你，子， 你，呢，MPS，他，你，叫，你，多，够，呢， 公司，呢，你，都，路，够，你，你，我，贴，靠，block，up，哈，呢，够，你，你，都，晒，了，么，着，end graph，了， 他，呢，我，我，给，了，么，你，啊，着，呢，他，嘛，咯，咯，了，着，呢，我，American Rescue Plan，你，S，B，F，呢， 把，到，了，么，载， 他，了，么，推，着，我，还得，他，我，你，我， 啊，来，呃，该，有，来，海，能， 了，了，同，感，了，着，我，我，给，贴，到，着，了， 你，路，丢，里，up，哈， 可，丢，end graph，到，了，么，还得，叫，给，我，吃，他，了，呢，你，我，到，去，摸，去，用， 我，我，叫，你，呢，有，就，到，我，叫，了，么， 西，了，么，着，可能，啊，就，我，你，啊， 诶，我，都，西，叫，了，么，他，叫，啊， 也可能，都，去，走了，么，着，我，我，叫，米尼尔，来，嘿， 他，呢，了，么，推，我，给，P S，了，他，我，我，呢，了，么，推，你，啊，真，的，我，S，F，呢，你， 啊，你，他，里，了，么， 海，姑，诶，你，我，去，海，里，都，能，领，到，呢，且， 我，唱 鼓，我，佩，我，你，the new house，我，都，呢，我，我，你，你，子，你，叫，我，配，土，米尼尔，来，嘿，我，我，天，South High School， 他，了，还，真，的，我，叫，你， 我，你，呢，呢，去，都，米尼尔，来，嘿，了，搜，了，呢， 还，还，天，了，也，叫，他，他，叫，你， 他，我，还，多，诶，都，呢，嘿，你，住，到，South High，呢，他，路，西，哈，George Floyd，到，他，多，呢， 个，我，了，么，贴，到，就，谁，我，撒，这里，家，我， 他，我，他，叫，呢，呢，我，有，了，么，车，到，我， 你，来，哭，也，叫，了，么，八，都，叫，米尼尔，来，嘿， 鸟儿， 鼓，我，佩，我，Tamerun, Rose, last go,我，都， 我，给，是，啊， 龙，他，是，呢， 我，给，了，么，我，superintendent，呢，你，有，西， 西，哈，到，我，我，我，
Board members. Thank you. I know we've got a couple of members who are still making their way back to the dais. But we're going to get started. If we get quiet down in the room, or take the conversation to the lobby. Okay, directors. After superintendent's opening remarks and comments, we're going to have an update on transportation and a deep presentation on the school calendar development. After each of those items, we will pause briefly for any director questions or comments. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead with your opening remarks, and then please go straight into the transportation update.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, Student Representative Deborah Meskell, Director of Staff, and those of you who are joining us here via livestream. I'd like to begin this evening by acknowledging two important celebrations that are happening this week. Each highlighting communities within our city and our schools. Yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and today is Latino Heritage Day in Minneapolis Public Schools, as declared by the board in 2014, which falls within Latino Heritage Month. These days really do offer an opportunity to both honor the continuing contributions of these communities, and also for reflection on how we can better serve our Indigenous and Latino students. I wanted to note that we are having a virtual Latino Heritage Month district-wide celebration this Thursday.
[Indonesian] COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the midst of a Latino virtual page. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a social media. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of Friday, and now we're in the middle of Friday, with a COVID-19 regulation. We're in the middle of a regular testing, and now we're in the middle of a contract. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a selecting testing option, and now we're in the middle of a testing option. We're in the middle of a testing, and now we're in the middle of a testing. We're in the middle of a testing, and now we're in the middle of a testing. We're in the middle of a response, and now we're in the middle of a response. We're in the middle of a regular testing, and now we're in the middle of a testing. We're in the middle of a public school, and now we're in the middle of a public school. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a very limited, and now we're in the middle of a very limited. We're in the middle of a community site, and now we're in the middle of a convention center, airport. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a public comment, and now we're in the middle of a public comment. We're in the middle of a quarantine, and now we're in the middle of a quarantine. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic. We're in the middle of a final plan. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a strategic pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a strategic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a final consideration, and now we're in the middle of a final consideration. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a CDI. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a study, and now we're in the middle of a study. We're in the middle of a election day, and now we're in the middle of a election day. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a CDI, and now we're in the middle of a CDI. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a transportation effort, and now we're in the middle of a transportation effort. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a support staff. We're in the middle of a situation, and now we're in the middle of a situation. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a COVID-19 pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a public school, and now we're in the middle of a public school. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a driver shortage, and now we're in the middle of a driver shortage. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a type-three vehicle. We're in the middle of a community organizations, and now we're in the middle of a community organizations. We're in the middle of a type-three vehicle, and now we're in the middle of a type-three vehicle. We're in the middle of a minivan, and now we're in the middle of a minivan. We're in the middle of a type-three vehicle, and now we're in the middle of a type-three vehicle. We're in the middle of a commercial driver's license, and now we're in the middle of a commercial driver's license. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a process, and now we're in the middle of a process. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a state, and now we're in the middle of a state. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a transportation, and now we're in the middle of a transportation. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a bus, and now we're in the middle of a bus. We're in the middle of a bus, and now we're in the middle of a bus. We're in the middle of a quarter mile, and now we're in the middle of a quarter mile. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a bus, and now we're in the middle of a bus. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
Thank you, Superintendent Director. Do you have any questions?
We're in the middle of a superintendant, and now we're in the middle of a superintendant. We're in the middle of a test.
Thank you.
We're in the middle of a test.
Now, go ahead with your school calendar development parameters.
We're in the middle of a school calendar session. We're in the middle of a session, and now we're in the middle of a session. We're in the middle of a calendar session, and now we're in the middle of a calendar session. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a staff committee, and now we're in the staff committee. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. The first reading, we're in the middle of a first reading. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a snow day, and now we're in the middle of a snow day. We're in the middle of a tour, and now we're in the middle of a tour. We're in the middle of a E-learning day, and now we're in the middle of a E-learning day. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a E-learning day. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a K, and now we're in the middle of a K. We're in the middle of a P, and now we're in the middle of a P. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a teacher duty day, and now we're in the middle of a teacher duty day. We're in the middle of a record-keeping day, and now we're in the middle of a record-keeping day. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a spring break, and now we're in the middle of a spring break. We're in the middle of a recommendation, and now we're in the middle of a recommendation. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a cultural ceremony, and now we're in the middle of a cultural ceremony. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
Directors, do you have any feedback or comments?
We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
I do have a question.
We're in the middle of a test.
You know, Aha, and you know, Fitcher, I would like for us to open up that discussion. We do have a lot of Muslim families that we serve, both students and staff. And so as we plan the calendar for the next three years, I would like to make sure that we have some conversation. I can bring information to help whatever is needed, given again that I am Muslim.
We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
Well, I would like to recommend not only E.
We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a indigenous day, and now we're in the middle of a indigenous day. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test.
Thank you, Chair Ellison.
We're in the middle of a share, Alison, we're in the middle of a share, Alison. We're in the middle of a director element, there's student grammar and best goal, good time. We're in the middle of a winter break, all of the, we're in the middle of a winter break. We're in the middle of a winter academy. We're in the middle of a all of the, and now we're in the middle of a all of the. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a staff availability, and now we're in the middle of a staff availability. We're in the middle of a winter break, and now we're in the middle of a winter break. We're in the middle of a spring break, and now we're in the middle of a spring break. Okay. We're in the middle of a test.
Thank you, Director Ali.
We're in the middle of a director, Ali. We're in the middle of a manager, we're in the middle of a manager. We're in the middle of a director, Alan, and there's students represented, I guess. We're in the middle of a change, change. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a Muslim faith, and now we're in the middle of a Muslim faith. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a change, change. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a camera, and now we're in the middle of a camera. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a holiday, and now we're in the middle of a holiday. We're in the middle of a director, Ali. Director Anderson, come in.
Thank you.
We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a calendar, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a calendar, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a chair, Alison, and director. We're in the middle of a call, and now we're in the middle of a call. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a staff, and now we're in the middle of a staff. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a winter break, and now we're in the middle of a winter break. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a vote, and now we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a short, long, or a contract.
Beyond, beyond winter break and the spring break, end of quarter, I believe we have at least one day off at the end of every quarter, so that's three days.
We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. Senior Sullivan, Officer Sullivan. We're in the middle of a collective bargain, and now we're in the middle of a collective bargain. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a director, Anderson. We're in the middle of a contract, and now we're in the middle of a contract. We're in the middle of a teacher and parents conference, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
And then I'm wondering, we have three days off, like next week, although I know that's the traditional conference time, but are all three days? Conference time, and is that written into, is there, do you have some understanding about those three days?
We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test. We're in the middle of a test, and now we're in the middle of a test.
Student representative Deborah Mesko。
对，他，卡，呢，我，还，叫，呃，the vice chair Anderson，了，我，别，蹭，呢，靠，阿，呢，靠，resolution。帮把着 对，别有摸家冷漠，晒，对，路 school board 有谁，好 park recreation，好，冷漠，洗到叫，中位，被摸去 直接 poly，他，嗯，摸可陌生了，我保证都好 啊，没得听哦，我 对，好冷漠，好，好 policy 你叫 对，还录了，去冷漠，家，还塔走呢，给 他刚才对，好，不要丢哦，保，天，吃掉，走，丢掉，冷漠，还说 student data 他 policy data 可能要叫，还说给，你挑冷漠，真的 这个，啊，直接 poly，他摸家冷漠，还呢，来，还冷漠，还说好 policy，叫给保证 直接 poly，他摸，陌生冷漠，找家 没得听哦，我了 好 revision 中 policy 不要丢哦，保，天，吃掉 对，他可能，我还有，啊，the vice chair Ernesto 冷漠，别蹭的，好，那个，好 resolution 我叫大王，忙呢，也咕噜 好撇冷漠，摸好 resolution 了，叫冷漠，还叫内，冷漠，晒去，我操，叫，来录里，干嘛嘞，对，还，对，内，冷漠，保刀 对，咕噜 呃，中门子，冷漠 擦工错地台，可能有，我了，还得，好给 老啊，到叫，没，中门子 啊，没得玻璃，没得说，但呢，但好 整，底差，叫，能老 家走，还错 可我整理，叫，给家 对，可能，好，别我，个，字，个，到，诶，叫内 别你摸，诶，叫 到我，叫，起来呢，贵，还说叫，起来，你这，high school 有水里 错了，诶，了，给到 对，可能有，摸，带，没，到，叫，没有拿钱，那个 但是嘛，姑去，姑去撒，冷漠 可能一好给，整间，对，叫，没有，老 诶，可，了，对，阿拉，应该，就直接跟到，那 摸，别住呢 对，别，都，几乎，对，阿拉，对，阿多，了，了 对，了，到，啊，去，到了，我，着，啊 塔走，好给，那，该，那种 对，冷漠，到，背，冷漠，诶，路，desert 呢，个，背 对，可能，姑说的，好给，老，把，我 对，可能，你除了 resolution，诶，来，录里，干嘛嘞，摸，多，对，内，保，到 姑好给，测，算 诶，冷漠，好，走，竞争 但能，也，透了，背，好，跟，可以，透了，对，别叫，能，都，诶，freaking 呢 冷漠，还说，叫，错地台 啊，好，背，我，呢 对，可能，一好，你，啊 等对，super, um, student representative Deborah Mesko 姑，你对，好 resolution 呢，你也好，诶，等，到，叫，没有拿钱，我起来呢 这，对，你，家，了，了，去，撒 来，有，到，了，了，路，直接跟到 那，到，叫，真，能，了，吃，摸，好 但是嘛，姑好，撒，错，对，谁 不摸，一好给，别，冷漠，撒，错，对，摸，对，对，可能，你这，high school，个，摸，对，叫，错地台呢 来，有，通，肯，好给，那，啊 他，可，摸，了，一，走，保证，走了 能，对，叫 对，冷漠，还说，对，叫，给 对，爱丽森，那，对，你，好，摸，一好，vaccine clinic desert 呢，你，有，冷漠，八，走，到 啊，叫，给，过，了，对，背，但是嘛，了，好，吃，摸，叫，能 冷漠，过，可能，对，背，姑，你，不，真，到，或者，别叫，nerve，对，你，摸，走，后，了，four time 了但是 来，对，去，冷漠，我，了，带，school，呢，到，all 问题 带，空，起来，呢，了，你，好，我，到，好，车 可能，一好， summary，对，对，superintendent，好，给，生，就，对，对，superintendent，对，家，呢 苏，他，要，好，给，拧，到，冷漠 撒，了，头，了，都，敢，听，哦，那，对，好 冷漠，还说，叫，你，车，budget development，冷漠，就，路，直接，跟到 啊，听，背，那，对，还说，好给，冷漠，more human resources，好给，冷漠 车，能，我，后，旅，对，冷漠 车，啊，钱，对，能，我，后，旅，对，我 啊，跟，可，呢 通，干，都 冷漠，还说，human resources，对，对，superintendent，到，好，还得，我，到，中，了 对，冷漠，还说，真的，好